Regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council. It is Monday, March 5th, 2012. Would ask everyone in the audience to please stand for a prayer led by Councilman Red Edgar, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, Lord, we ask your blessings on our families, our loved ones, our troops overseas, and on the decisions that we make tonight, especially as we go forward with the budget. I have a special request tonight and ask everyone to keep in them in their prayers. The wife of retired Lieutenant Bura was deceased last night, and we would request your prayers for them. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Red. And may we have roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Here.
Councilman Hall? Mayor Copan?
Here.
Councilman Kinsler?
Here.
Councilman Lee?
Here.
Councilman Mangini?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Stokes?
Here.
Councilman Arnone?
Here.
Councilman Bosco?
Councilman Crowley?
Here.
Nine members present, two are absent.
For the fire evacuation announcement, in the event that the fire alarm sounds here at Town Hall, I remind everyone in our audience that we need to evacuate the building. Closest exit would be to the rear of council chambers and out to the front of Town Hall. If you choose to go out the door, the side door, to your right or left, we ask that you take the back set of stairs to the backside of Town Hall and out to the parking lot. Minutes of the preceding meetings. First would be the special meeting of February 2nd, 2012.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. Then we've got the special meeting of February 15th, 2012.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. We have the special meeting of February 21st, 2012. Moved by Councilman Kinsler, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Discussion? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. And we have the regular meeting of February 21st, 2012. By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. That completes the minutes. Next item on our agenda is our special guest section of the agenda, and this evening we have Lori Gates coming forward for an update on Enfield Hua.
You're getting good at that.
I am getting good at it. Welcome, Lori.
Thank you. You know how good I am at public speaking, so I'm going to be public reading. Wanted to thank you for allowing me to come speak to you tonight. I wanted to update you as a council, but also those at home watching, on some of the latest achievements of the supporters of the Enfield Hua website. As you probably are aware, after much pestering by me, Scott Copan connected me with Pam Brown and Joel Cox of Social Services in 2009, and Enfield Hua came to fruition in September of the same year, primarily as a compilation of web links, some local, some national, videos, information for registered users to have access to. We now have over 300 registered users. I'm very proud to be the administrator of this website, but it doesn't belong to me. It belongs to the citizens of Enfield and the people that it supports. It has grown to be more than just a website. Periodically, there have been projects offered to those who wish to become involved, such as cleaning up the yard of an older veteran who was unable to do the work himself, marching in a parade, sometimes even when it rains. Hard. Petitioning for ballfields to be named, cookie and care package drives, or getting involved with Rees-A across America. Awareness is the key to knowledge, and we have collected over 70 Enfield-area veteran biographies as not only a way to thank those who've served our country, but to learn from the rich history of our town and of those who have helped shape our country into what it is today. In February of 2010, we launched the Support a Local Soldier program, where care packages were sent overseas to service members with ties to Enfield. Some of these soldiers are born and bred Enfield citizens; some have ties to our town via work, friends, school, et cetera. As far as I'm concerned, if you have ties to Enfield and you're sent by the government anywhere outside of our country, you'll always appreciate a piece of home sent to wherever you are. In my opinion, this might be one of the best examples of what Enfield Hua stands for. It allows anyone, at any time, the opportunity to help, to recognize those among us who have served, or to donate to a care package that's going to a service member overseas. I think we all like to help, but it's only human to want to know who you're helping. The website makes it a little more personal with photographs of those we are assisting, and sometimes notes sent back home. My house looks like a warehouse with boxes and bags of all sorts of goodies from all sorts of people, all donated for care packages. JFK, Parkman, and Crack, as well as Enfield Little League, have all run care package drives to contribute, and even more have had schoolchildren write letters and cards to be included in the boxes. They make a huge difference. And I know this because I'm the lucky one; it gets the emails sent back periodically from a deployed person telling me so, and then I get to share it on the website, on Facebook. Those notes may come to my email inbox, but they are for you, for every person in the town of Enfield. They're from people we may never have the honor of meeting in person, who have taken time out of their lives to make sure that you know that they are grateful for what you've done for them. We get to make a personal connection with that person we see in a uniform elsewhere and wish to say thank you to. We come together, and together we make a difference. As of tonight, 28 service members with ties to Enfield have received packages through donations to the Care Package Program, and I want to take a minute to tell you a few of their names and a bit about them. Staff Sergeant David McGee. David was our first adoptee. His photo was featured in the Enfield press, wearing a Little League jersey and holding a signed baseball from the kids at Enfield Little League while he was stationed in Kuwait. Sergeant Christopher Bergendahl wrote home, "With every package that arrives, it gives a warm feeling inside knowing that people do appreciate our sacrifices and help where they can. Thank you to everyone who has donated." Specialist Roland Peacock said, "We're thankful for their thoughtfulness and for making their own sacrifices to help make things a little bit easier and more comfortable for all of us over here. It makes me feel very proud to be a soldier." Staff Sergeant Michael McDonald, who received a package via the Enfield Little League, handwrote his note, saying, "We can only be here as long as people like you support us. As long as our country maintains the will to win this fight, so shall we." Sergeant Ryan Holloway recently wrote, "Please thank everyone who made our holidays and just every day in general better. I don't think we could do it without you all that give us the generous support." Lance Corporal Connor Beck. Connor was awarded Purple Heart Medal just over two weeks ago for injuries sustained while overseas, and he says, "I come from a very amazing town." I'd say I have to agree with Connor. Our most recently returned adoptee, Staff Sergeant Peter Mitchell, sent a note right before he finished his deployment. This was his third deployment, one in which he received a Bronze Star Medal. Staff Sergeant Mitchell doesn't currently reside in Enfield, but this is where he spends a lot of his time, and his friends enrolled him in the Enfield Hua Care Package Program. He wrote, "Well, Enfield Hua, I just wanted to thank everyone one last time. Your thoughts, prayers, and selfless service to the country's men and women of the armed forces is remarkable. Every time I received a package with your name on it, I knew it came with love from Connecticut. We are making a difference." Does anybody have any questions?
Great. Thank you, Lori, for the presentation and update. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Mangini?
I just wanted to say thank you, Lori, for all the hard work. It truly is amazing what you've started, and the fact that, you know, it's growing. It's just really honorable. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I'm going to interrupt for a minute.
Yes, please introduce.
This is Staff Sergeant Peter Mitchell. Peter Mitchell, this is the town council.
Peter?
Thank you. Thank you from all council members and the mayor. I want to say, being a native of Connecticut, like Lori said, I wasn't raised here in Enfield. I have a lot of friends here, and this is my fifth time overseas. Four deployments to Iraq, my first one to Afghanistan. And throughout this deployment, I've gotten so many care packages from the town that it came to a point where I had to tell my own family members to stop sending me packages because I was getting so much from the town. So I wanted to, I asked Lori if I could come here tonight, speak with you guys, and actually present something to the town to show my thanks to the support of the citizens of Enfield.
Great. Should we come out front?
All right, Scott, why don't you go?
Yeah.
Tom?
Everyone?
Let's go.
Come on, come on. We're going to all come out front. So. Good, great.
And this is why we have the handy-dandy handheld microphone, so.
This is a flag that I've flown throughout northern Afghanistan. It was flown on different types of military helicopters, from the helicopters to our airplanes, and throughout every single spot that I went to in Afghanistan. And it was a plaque to say to the town of Enfield, Connecticut, "Thank you for the support given to me during my deployment to Afghanistan from 12 February 2011 to 12 February 2012," presented on the 5th day of March by Staff Sergeant Peter J. Mitchell.
Peter, thank you very much. On behalf of the town of Enfield, we accept this. And Matt, I think this is something that we can hang right here in council chambers for everyone to be able to see. So on behalf of the town, thank you for your service to our country. We appreciate all that you've done for us, and we're glad that you can consider Enfield home. And through Lori's efforts and everyone through Enfield Hua, Enfield does get it, and we take care of our fellow soldiers. And just, it's amazing about the amount of work that that group has done to be able to support our soldiers overseas and here and throughout the country as well. So on behalf of the town, thank you so much. This is heavy, and so I don't want to drop it on television, so, but thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Surprise!
Yes, real no surprise. Thank you, Lori.
First, gee, should have been that I wanted to speak publicly.
Yes, but Cindy?
I just want to say thank you, and obviously.
Thank you. It makes a big difference in a lot of different people's lives, so it's everybody's.
Thanks, Cindy. Councilman Kinsler?
Thank you, Lori. Nothing brings patriotism home faster than a show like that, and we thank you for what you do. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
You're doing everything right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Crowley?
Ms. Gates.
Oh, please.
I don't know what to say. You have taken an idea and developed this huge, huge thing that affects so many people now, and it came from you, from your heart, and nothing but great intentions. It speaks so highly of you, and you should be very proud of what you have accomplished. And I know you have people that help you.
A lot.
But I want you to know, it started with you, and it gives me goosebumps to talk to you, and I'm honored. Thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Deputy Mayor Nelson?
You earned that, Lori. We didn't. I mean, because you're the driving force behind all of it. I mean, I'm not going to say too much more because Pat summed it up, but you are responsible for all of this, and there's nothing we can do to thank you. And that soldier right there, I mean, just showed us how much it means to them for what you do. And all you do is you give everybody the push sometimes we need to recognize those who are fighting for us, and just thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ken. Councilman Stokes?
I didn't, I mean, we had so many folks who've already said something, and of course, they said it so well, but obviously I want to thank you for what you do, and for the veterans, and for, I think a couple of us here are veterans, and we appreciate the work you do, and I want to, you know, thank the community who supports you, and they do an awesome job, too. But this tonight was just emotional, and it's just great to have this presented to us, and I think it is good to be hanging in the council chamber, so that way we can see it every day, every time we come in this room and remind ourselves about those who are out there serving for us. So thank you for reminding us. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else? Councilman Arnone?
Yeah, another thank you, and also for the Facebook page with all your volunteers, the service, the support that you give to families through that Facebook page. My partner has three enlisted now. Two just came back from service, one's still there, and I can't tell you how it is for him to be able to relate to people with like circumstances where I can't. I can't relate to that, but he can, and it helps so much. It helps the families deeply, and I thank you for them, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Then for me, Lori, as everyone said, thank you so much. I am so glad you picked up that phone call a couple years ago, and we were just a conduit or an assistance to get things going, and it all came from your heart, your mind, your family, and all of the folks that help out with Enfield Hua. And we're a much better community because of the involvement of Enfield Hua in everything that's occurred over the past couple of years. Keep the good ideas coming. Never hesitate to call or to send an email to recruit folks as well.
That's on the record. You remember.
I tell you, good ideas come from Lori Gates, and good ideas get fostered because of her apple cheesecake. And a cup of coffee and see what's happened. So thank you so much to you and to all the folks that work on behalf of our servicemen and women overseas and here in the U.S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. I know that you that would not cry.
Did you bring an apple cheesecake?
Now I need to leave, don't I? Just so you know, that entire display was done by Peter. He emailed me from Afghanistan and said, "I want to do something, and how can I do it?" So this is all him. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Can we take down the president?
No, 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 no. Maybe right over there, nice little spot right there, so. Next item on our agenda is public communications and petitions. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, I ask you to please raise your hand. I will call on you, come forward to the center table. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes. I do get to time you, and if you start approaching the four-and-a-half-minute mark, I will politely interrupt you and ask you to please wrap up to stay under the five minutes. And we ask that you please refrain from the use of personalities. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Mr. Christmas?
Donald Christmas, 25 Lincoln Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I came here tonight because I saw, I was looking at the town website that they're going to have another transit meeting on the 15th of this month, and I came here to speak to you about, I lived here in Enfield all my life. I've talked to elders in this town. I've talked to the people who actually built this town from Enfield. They told me that the reason why Enfield was even built is that people wanted to move out of the city, to work in the city, but they wanted to live in a suburb. They wanted to get away from the trains and the buses, and they came to Enfield for a higher standard quality of life. They came here because they were able to afford to live here. It was quiet. It was a place to hang your hat. It was a way to get away at nighttime, and you didn't have to deal with all the noise and the pollution of the city. I've lived down in Thompsonville for almost 11 years, and there's a bus station, there's a bus that comes into Enfield, and I follow that once in a while just to see how much attendance that's on the bus. And I can probably count on one hand as many people that are on that bus, if not even that. Sometimes there's only one or two people on it. And I remember a couple of years ago, probably maybe a little more than a couple of years old, the town council actually cut the bus service down in Thompsonville because it wasn't even being used. No one uses the bus station. It's not even being used, because most people that are even living in Thompsonville, being a poor person, we still want to give our kids cars. We work our hard. We might be able to buy them brand-new cars, our children, but we always buy them a second-hand car. Cars mean freedom to me, my children, and all the children that live down in Thompsonville approaching that 16 birthday. I never hear of anybody turning 16 here in the town of Enfield and say, "I want to take a bus." I don't think the bus system will actually work down in Thompsonville, the way the streets are designed down in Thompsonville. I don't think the bus coming through there with all the noise and them trying to get in and out of Thompsonville would be a good idea. I also went to the town website, and just wanted to read you what this actually says on our website. It says, "The town of Enfield is a friendly, diverse, and active community located in the scenic Connecticut River, featuring a convenient location accessible to Walden Wingland with tremendous access to retail, commerce, and industrial areas, with an affordable standard of living, and with quality neighborhoods and excellent municipal amenities. This high quality of life supports the residents who choose to live here, the business that choose to work here, and our businesses who choose to play here." I don't see how a bus station can make our quality of life any better. I think that the quality of life is a lot better than most towns like Manchester, East Hartford, Hartford, Springfield. I think anybody that's living in those towns like to come to Enfield for a higher standard of living than they come to Southfield summers. They get away from them bus stations and bus the buses. Have you guys ever driven in Manchester and East Hartford? Those buses are rude, they're crude, they pull out in front of you, they don't stop, they're loud, they make all kinds of squealing noises with their tires and rims and hitting the brakes. I really don't think that a bus station down in Thompsonville, I think it would want to portray what we live in. The last part of the town thing, it says that the mission of the town of Enfield Government is to provide effective, physically responsible, and useful services in a manner that promotes a high standard of community life. I don't think how, I think that the town of Enfield does have a high standard of living and a good community life, and people that want to produce in Thompsonville or to produce in Enfield come here to be producers, not to be users, and not keep, then want to use something from their government. I think that if you guys put this to a vote, I would, you guys would find out that the minority is trying to dictate to the majority, because I don't think you would get a majority turnout for somebody, for this train station, bus station for Enfield. I think that people who like the roots of Enfield like to know that it's a quiet community, even though that we do have a lot of businesses, which is great. We can drive anywhere we want to go and go anywhere we want to be. I really like to let you guys to think about that, our quality of life here in Enfield and this transit station, and put it to a rest finally in November, at least put it on the ballot, and let the voters tell you what we want it or not, and put this, and just put it to the end. Use that money and reduce our taxes and give us our money back instead of spending money foolishly on this program that keeps coming up all the time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public Communications? Walter?
Welcome back, Walter. Been a while.
Walter Cruzel, 21 Charlie Road, and also owner of Peerless Tool, which I'm going to speak under that hat tonight. I want to publicly thank the Enfield Police for their hard and diligent work. We had a string of thefts back in December and January, and with their persistence and coming back and checking on my place and finally staking out the place, they finally caught the guy, and actually his court hearing is tomorrow at the court. So again, I just want to publicly thank the Enfield Police for their hard work, and hopefully, since then it's been very quiet, so it was a gentleman from Summers that decided to take useless steel. It was just regular plain-old steel that's like two cents a pound. It's no value to it, but yet it was some value to him, I guess, but that's all I wanted to say, and I agree with Council, Deputy Mayor Nelson, they think that it would look good. We could put that back there somewhere.
Thank you, Walter. But you got to remember, what goes around comes around, and eventually there'll be a Republican president again, so.
Not for a while.
I said eventually. Public Communications? Jeff, come on up.
Jeff, my Jack, 3 Sharp Street. I'm not sure if anybody's had a chance to look yet, but if you go out to the Clean Energy's website, cleanenergy.net, enfieldcleanenergy.net, up there we have a new link that's called "The Firehouse Solar Project," and you can go up there and look and see how much electricity those four fire, or at least two of the firehouses are generating. It's pretty impressive. The Shaker Pines Firehouse has saved the taxpayers about $1,600 already since October 1st, and the Hazard Ave is somewhere around $1,200 or $1,300. But you can see live information, how much electricity is being generated out there on a 15-minute basis, and a composite of how much has been saved on those free solar panels. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Public Communications? Scott?
Mr. Bertrand and Mr. Ballard.
Thank you. Scott Bertrand, representing the Enfield Housing Authority, 1 Pearson Way. To my right, William Ballard, Vice Chairman.
320 Ever Road.
First of all, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority, I'd like to thank the council for the meeting that we had on the 21st of February. I thought it was very informative and really enjoyed the dialogue. We look forward to working with the town to evaluate the future needs of housing, as we talked about in our community. In fact, the study we talked about will be on the agenda for the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority at their meeting next Monday to possibly move forward on. I've also, since then, forwarded some information to, through the manager, and I believe possibly to one of the, two of the council members regarding proposed legislation during housing. I know that was of interest to a few of the council members. But I'm here tonight because I want to clarify what I believe might have been some misinformation that was presented at the quarterly council meeting that was held on the 27th. I picked it up from the minutes that were posted online. First, I need to say that we're not aware of any of our senior developments that has a drug-dependent young man who just got out of prison, is a pedophile, and causes problems at that project, as was quoted at that meeting. I believe that was a reference to an individual that resided at one time with us over seven, almost seven years ago, and was evicted. So I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that for the record, as it will go in the minutes. And I want everybody to understand and realize that we do screen all of our applicants, and we do that with a criminal background check, which also includes a check of the sex offender registry. In fact, we routinely go back to the police logs that are posted every day, both arrest and such, for our ongoing lease enforcement activities. We do have a very good, well-established relationship with the Enfield Police. We share information back and forth on an ongoing basis. It's very helpful when they can approach from a criminal point of view, and we can approach it from the civil point of view in courts when we do have issues. You know, they do a great job within the limitations that they have to work with, just as we have to work within certain limitations as well. Second, there was an issue of the fact of that we should have a tough lease, and I want the council members and the residents of the town of Enfield to know that we do have a very tough lease, as tough as it can be. That's allowed by law, anyway. Again, we have to work within certain limitations. And my staff really spends a considerable amount of time on lease enforcement activities. And as with most landlords, you know, we're required to allow the tenants an opportunity remedy violations, except in cases of what the courts deemed to be serious nuisances. Ultimately, evictions are a decision of the housing courts, and the courts are hesitant at times to make people homeless, especially when they view public housing as being the housing of last resort. I hope that clarifies some of the facts, and just to make sure that they get it out there. And I do want to reiterate, we really look forward to working together with the members of the council and the town staff to meet the housing needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott and Bill. Appreciate you coming up and clarifying the record.
Thank you.
Public Communications? Anyone else? And I'll declare public communications closed. Next item, is that the gavel? Next item on the agenda is Councilman Communications and Petitions. Councilman Stokes?
Just.
remedy violations, except in cases of what the courts deemed to be serious nuisances. Ultimately, evictions are a decision of the housing courts, and the courts are hesitant at times to make people homeless, especially when they view public housing as being the housing of last resort. I hope that clarifies some of the facts and just to make sure that they get it out there. And I do want to reiterate, we really look forward to working together with the members of the council and the town staff to meet the housing needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott and Bill. Appreciate you coming up and clarifying the record.
Thank you.
Public Communications. Anyone else? Then I'll declare Public Communications closed. Next item, is that the gavel? Next item on the agenda is Councilman Communications and Petitions. Councilman Stokes.
Just a few minutes ago, Mr. Ballard came to me, and he was looking for Councilman Bosco, who's home sick this evening, to give him something that's in District 1, so he gave it to me and through the mayor to the town manager. And Bill, you may have to help me with this exactly, but on Post Office Road and Town Farm Road down as you go towards the bridge, I believe it's the expansion strips are beginning to come out and leave a kind of a crater there, so you might want to check that. So, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Greg. Councilman Kinsler.
Thank you, Scott. Couple of things today. Through the mayor to Matt, a question on the dog park came up, and perhaps you can lend in your communications some information as to how they can go about this. Because they are a separate, you know, nonprofit entity, they're asking if the town has a conduit in which they can purchase, a supplier which they can purchase, like where you have Little League benches where the kids will all sit on one little bench that's attached into the ground as opposed to buying, you know, portable benches that move around inside the dog park so some of the elderly that visit the dog park can sit down, or if somebody who's disabled could sit down without having to worry about the bench leaving the premises. So if you could just look into that, I don't know if it's even something you can answer tonight or get back to me, so I could just get back to them. In talking about the dog park, I just wanted to let the public know that it's going fantastic. I know our mayor attends there at least a couple of times a week. Through the mayor to Matt, I understand we have a porta potty on the way for the convenience of the owners of the dogs. And just if you give us an update on that, because I know it hasn't arrived yet. But the dog park is a vital part of our community. It is a nonprofit, therefore it requires that it actually makes an income to pay for some of the things that the public gets to use and our dogs get to use. I want to share with you, they're having a spaghetti dinner on April 14th at the Moose Lodge at 124 South Road. If you've never gone to those in the past, they're inexpensive, they're very fun, and all the proceeds, all of them, 100% go to the benefit of the dog park. And they need to buy biodegradable bags for the doggy pots, they need to buy eventually more chips for the grounds, fencing materials, that type of thing. So if you could support them, they would be greatly appreciated, and I encourage you to go out and visit. When you do, there's a rule sign out there, and in the first few times you come out there, there may be some rules that you may not be aware of. Please take the time to read the rules. So far, we haven't had any bad incidences, but there's two parks, one for the small dogs, one for the big dogs. And it's important that you put your dog in the right one so it feels better about itself. And Scott has a very big dog. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
You got to run with the big dogs.
Barking with the big dogs.
Cindy's got a big dog, too.
Yeah, speaking of dogs.
Councilman Mangini, yes.
Just to tag along to Councilman Kinsler, I'm a daily visitor to the Enfield Dog Park with both my Dalmatian, you know, son's Dalmatian, and my Beagle, Daphne. But to Tom's point, please, if you can, you know, support the dog park. It is an excellent avenue for both the animals and for their owners. And do obey the rules, that's very important as well. May I have a good time? I have a good time, watch. On another note, child daycare, we did.
Oh, your microphone.
With child daycare, we did celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday last Friday, and I had the privilege of reading not only one book over at the Enfield Child Daycare, but excerpts from seven books, because it wouldn't have been fair to read just one child's book. So to make it fair, I read two pages of each other child's book, but it was great, it was a lot of fun. And these children actually sang a song in four languages, which I found to be amazing. So the Enfield Child Daycare is doing a wonderful, wonderful job over there. To, through our mayor, to Mr. Kuppler, our town manager, I need to get an update on the status of the traffic issue on Donna Street. I don't see any traffic monitoring systems, I don't see any police over there, and there is an issue with speeders, and there are children, so I'm wondering where we are with that. So I just want to see if we can get that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilman Crowley.
Thanks, Mayor. Just through you to the town manager, real quick, Post Road, on the corner of Post Office and Post Road, I don't know if we got out there yet, I know that we talked about it in the past, and I know the weather's been uncooperative, but as soon as we can, only because it's like a minefield out there, kind of like Church Street. So if we can get out there and take, and I'm sure there's other potholes and stuff that we'll be hearing about very shortly, but that was one that went over the other day and it was in rough shape. And I know, again, we had that snowstorm and it kind of dampened some of the stuff we're doing or planning on doing. But hopefully the warm weather is on its way here this weekend and it'll stay here for quite a long time. I want to send congratulations out to the Enfield Boys Basketball Team, Enfield High Boys Basketball Team. They're the regular season champs with an undefeated 20-0 record. They had the league tournament, they went undefeated through the tournament, they're 23-0 right now, and they're ranked number one in the Class M in the state. They have their first game tomorrow night at home at Enfield High. I hope we can pack the gym, hope it's standing room only. These kids really deserve it. They play just unbelievable. I mean, Councilman Lee's been, and some of the other councilmen have been to the games. It's just a great, great pleasure to watch these kids play, and a lot of these kids came up through the program here in town, the Enfield Rec League, Enfield Travel League, middle school, and freshman basketball. So it's great to see that it pays off to have the kind of programs. Games will be Tuesday night if they win tomorrow night, they play again on Thursday night, 7 o'clock start. I would get there early if you can because I think the gym's going to be packed. And also, I'd like to congratulate, and I'm not sure exactly what division it was, but the Enfield Travel Basketball, they run a great program. They have the league champs, I think it was the fifth grade boys were the league champs this year. I kind of honed in on the conversation and got that information through the kids, but I believe it was fifth, it could have been sixth, but I believe it was fifth grade champs. But Enfield Travel does a great job in promoting the kids and getting the kids out to play. Anytime any of the kids get out for any sport, Enfield Little League, Thompsonville Little League, their seasons are coming around, it's just great to see young kids out there and playing. And our own Enfield Rec Department has their playoffs for the 7th and 8th grade this week on Saturday. Games start at 9 o'clock at JFK. I believe the games start at 9:00, 10:15, and 11:30. If you get a chance and you have some time, bring your kids or just go out and watch these kids play. They have a great time playing. They play hard and have a great time. But this is what it all stems from, and that's why you have a team right now that's 23-0, because kids get involved and do the right thing. So I want to thank you and wish those guys the best of luck.
Great. Thanks, Pat. Councilman Communications. Anyone else? Councilman Mangini.
I was waiting for Deputy Mayor Nelson to come back, but seeing that he didn't, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items B1, B2, B4, D, E, F, G, H, and I to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Bingo.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Kinsler, to move those items to miscellaneous. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Items have been moved to miscellaneous. I've got a couple items. First of all, going back a week or so, Councilman Mangini and I had the great pleasure of participating in the Kite First Reader Ceremony at the Enfield Square back on February 23rd, and there were 70-plus first readers that actually received recognition that evening, well over 80 that actually achieved the status of being literate and being able to read in this round. And First Readers is a great program. They were all in their orange t-shirts, and they received a medal and a congratulatory handshake, and then a picture in front of a big book with Councilman Mangini. So to all the folks through Kite and to the parents for encouraging their youngsters to learn to read, congratulations to them. On, a week ago tonight, we had our quarterly public informational meeting at Parkman, and just wanted to thank the residents that did come out. To be honest, the attendance was a little light, and hopefully at the next quarterly meeting, we can get some more residents to come out and participate in the process because it's a great dialogue opportunity, question-and-answer session back and forth. So look for the announcement, but it will be held in May. And because of the Memorial Day holiday, we traditionally hold these quarterly public information meetings on the last Monday of the month, but since the last Monday of the month in May is Memorial Day, we are bumping it to Wednesday, I believe. So it's that last Wednesday in May. Just Friday, Councilman Mangini mentioned reading, and it was the birthday of Dr. Seuss, and I had the opportunity to go over to Head Start and read the book Hop on Pop, and I tell you, that is a tough book to read. But thank you for the invitation by Head Start to go over and read to one of the classes there and then to tour around the school. Open invitation to anyone if you want to make your way over to Head Start and see the great work that they're doing there. And just yesterday, Sunday, March 4th, Alice Allen and the Allen family had the release of her husband Ed Allen's book on Colonel Augustus G. Hazard and the Hazard Powder Company, and what a beautiful presentation, a great turnout. I learned from Councilman Lee that from the books that were brought there, it was a total sellout of the hardcover books, but books will be available online purchase, and we'll get that information out. And then they'll be also for sale at the Old Town Hall when the Enfield Historical Society opens for the season from May through October. But congratulations to Allen and to Alice and to the Allen family for the completion of that book. I bought one and I started reading it last night, and great historical value, I tell you. So if you get a chance to get a book, they're available in soft cover, black and white, hardcover, black and white, and hardcover color. And, oh, it's through Amazon, so through amazon.com. And today, because it's reading, I was invited to Enfield Street School to go to the Family Resource Center, and I read there and then visited a first-grade class and a second-grade class at the school. And I want to just thank everyone at Enfield Street School for the warm welcome. And then just a special thank you to the second-grade class, and I was handed the stack of thank you notes that they colored. I'm going to pass them around, but to the second-grade class, thank you so much for these thank you notes, and you can read through them. I want them back, though, because I haven't read them all yet, but I appreciated the invitation to be there. Upcoming.
This one wants to be a committee member.
Yeah. Upcoming would be Monday, March 12th, the mayor's advisory council. Looking forward to that meeting. March 16th, 17th, and 18th is the Home and Product Show sponsored by the North Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce. We will be held at Asnuntuck Community College, beginning at 5:00 PM on Friday, March 16th, and running through Sunday, the 18th. I, too, want to congratulate the Enfield High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team, and especially a good shout-out to Pat Crowley's wife, Barbara, who put together a Facebook page to help promote the basketball team. And for the community of Enfield, please get out and support these young men. What a tremendous accomplishment so far, and if the community's behind them, but even more and more gets behind them, hopefully they can bring home a championship. But I tell you, they're champions already, and so congratulations to the team and to the families involved. Enfield, the Enfield Education Foundation for Excellence in Education, Enfield Foundation for Excellence in Education, they are holding an Enfield Idol Competition. And the actual idol competition is going to be held on May 4th, 2012, at Asnuntuck Community College from 7:00 to 9:00. But if you want to be in the Enfield Idol Competition, you need to audition, and the auditions are going to be held on March 21st and 22nd at Asnuntuck from 5:00 to 8:00 PM both days. And what they're asking people to do, if you wish to audition, is go to Effie's website, which is www.effeofenfield.org. So efeofenfield.org to sign up for auditions. And this is a fundraiser for the foundation, their first time through, so hopefully we get a lot of good Enfield talent out to audition, and then we'll see what happens on May 4th. And Councilman Kinsler asked me to, for people interested in the dog park, to please go to the dog park Facebook page, Enfield Dog Park Action Committee. So they got a Facebook page as well, and they have a website, so you can Google and find out great information on the dog park. And my last comment is to my brother Todd, who turns 49 years old today. Happy birthday, Todd. Chances are, what's that? Yes, he's my older brother. And chances are, he's not watching because he's not all that political, but just wanted to give a shout-out to my brother Todd. Happy birthday. I think 49 is easier than turning 50, right? That's it for me. Any other Councilman Communications? Councilman Kinsler.
Sorry, I had to throw a shout-out. We had some folks that came up with an idea, and we kind of ran with it last weekend, called Cash Mob. And if you haven't heard about it, you probably will, they're doing it in different parts of the country where a bunch of people get together, they take, target a small business, and they go out and spend some money and learn about the business, try out a new business. And what we did this weekend, and we picked a few ice cream shops and a few pizza shops and went and had a slice of pizza, and then got back together and went out and had an ice cream in the freezing cold. But a lot of folks showed up, and it was great. Just stay tuned if you hear about it through your own groups, please don't hesitate to join. I think next week, a 10-year-old that was there mentioned the greatest idea was maybe we'd do bakeries. So if you want to get some cannolis or some pies or cakes, that's going to be happening soon, so just stay tuned.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? All right, next item on the agenda is Town Manager's Report and Communications. Matt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had some issues, as councils aware, with our email, and I know I had a number of council members inquire about what happened and what town staff was doing to correct that, so I thought it'd be a very good idea to have Paul Russell, who's in attendance, come forward, give you a little background on that briefly, and let you know what actions IT Department is taking, so hopefully we won't go through that again.
Ever, ever.
Ever, ever. Ever again. Well, we have looked at several options. What the main problem was is we had some hardware issues, and to replace the hardware and bring in a company to kind of rebuild a new email environment called Exchange was going to be somewhere in upwards of $70,000 to $80,000. We're looking on a trial basis with EarthLink. They have a hosted solution in which we'll be able to take all of our existing emails and archive solutions, move them to a off-site email hosted solution where they provide a much more robust solution than what we have here. They have four different facilities, all redundantly connected, so that in the event they lose power, there's, each one of their four facilities have two separate electrical feeds from different areas, and each, the lowest one was four separate communication line feeds from four separate carriers. So we're pretty well-covered in being able to gain access to our emails, which also, in many cases, is our voicemail system as well. A lot of different phones we've set up where the voicemail goes to email. A lot of different phones we've set up where the voicemail goes to email, so that people can get it on their PDAs or BlackBerrys or their cellphones. So, we've got a lot invested in that. And for the price of roughly $23,000 a year for the service, we're anxiously hoping to be very successful for the town. It was certainly a long, long week without that email. We got to a certain point where we do a backup process, which is we do a full backup, and then we do incrementals on a daily basis. Of course, on Tuesday, at 9:00 o'clock in the morning, it hit. We're in the process of doing our next full backup. So, in order to recover the email system, we had to actually start seven days prior to that, rebuild our system for all seven days. And then we also, there was a period of time where we had to recover from our archive system. So, again, we have an appliance that holds every email communications in and out of our organization because of FOI. And we have every line of communications now set up since last March. So, we rebuilt a week's worth of emails in that venue as well, which a lot of the people had already read their messages. But in order to get them back up to date, they came back in and has unread. So, it was certainly an uncomfortable time for all our users using email at that time. But right now, we're back to a point where we are stable, and we're getting ready to transition over to the remote hosted solution, hopefully before we have another problem.
Thank you, Paul. Councilman Lee.
So, the $80,000 investment to bring up the messaging platform, you know, to where it needs to be, that is funding you will avoid spending?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
From a long-term perspective, can you explain what a hosted solution provides the town other than redundancy? I mean, is there cost avoidance down the road in terms of keeping Exchange up to, you know, a current version? Is that provided?
Yeah. It provides the full system administration as well. So, that'll free up resources that we now have on a service contract with a vendor that we use. So, that'll be all transitioned over. So, the net difference will be approximately $17,000 a year. It will be $17,000 a year in addition to what we're paying right now. But we'll have $8,000 of managed services that we're paying right now go towards that.
So, we do maintain Exchange licenses going forward?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We have to own those.
I see. All right. And we'll be taking a couple of servers down in the process?
Correct. We have four servers now that are utilized for our Exchange environment that are getting older anyhow. And those are going to need replacement that we were planning on replacing within the next year.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else? Questions, comments for Paul? Well, thanks for getting us through the downtime.
This is the IT version of Storm Alfred.
And it's also, it's good to have, that you quickly worked on options, too, because there were some frustrations out there from users.
Absolutely.
And so, you were able to address it right on and not say that we're just going back to the same old, same old. So...
Yeah. We certainly look to improve services, that's for sure.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I handed out to everybody earlier before the meeting a proposed budget calendar. And I just, when I noticed, as I was looking through that, there was one mistake under the Saturday, April 14th budget discussion. That would start at 9:00 AM, not 6:30 PM. So, or not 6:30 AM either.
We have another one?
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I don't know where his coat's still there.
Yeah, that would be a 9:00 AM start, not 6:30 AM or 6:30 PM. Although, if you want to start at 6:30 AM, we could. I have no problem with that.
Do the hard stop plan leave?
Yes. Just like, no, no, it's a little bit longer than that. Just like last year, I believe, we started at 9:00 AM, and it lasted to right around 3:00, 3:30.
Is it spring break week?
That would be, well, the following week that week is, correct. Well, yeah, it's the following week. It's, yeah, I believe, because it's the third, the third week in April, I believe.
So, at Leadership, we were looking at the calendar to try to fit, you know, not a Saturday on Easter weekend. And so, we talked about the 14th. We did it this way last year to cut down on the nightly meetings. And I think council appreciated it and staff appreciated it as well. And even if you can't attend all day on Saturday, and you can attend a good portion of it, it just helps move the process along.
And we try to get the larger departments there, so Public Works, Public Safety, Social Services. And if there's room after that, we may put another larger one in there. But we try to get through those larger ones all in one day. Right off, the first budget meeting, first budget discussion, would be scheduled for March 26th, which is a week from the last regular council meeting of the month. And I've been talking with the Board of Education, Dr. Gallagher there. And he has confirmed that they would be available to do that presentation. So, that's one, if I could get some feedback as quickly as possible, so I can lock that in. Pardon? The 26th, it's the one right after the presentation. So, it would be the second one on the list. And they would like to do it over at JFK Middle School, because there's, I think, one of the issues that is front and center on the board agenda is the replacement of the portables that they have there. And so, they want to have the ability to walk council through those to demonstrate what the need is with that. But if you can make, if I can lock in the 26th as soon as I can lock it in, the better off we are with that.
Anyone have issues with the 26th?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Let's go for it.
And then April 5th, over at Henry Barnard, we'd be looking to do another community conversation on the proposed budget, as we've done, I think, for the last three or four years. And then, you know, we have listed the dates for possibly other budget discussions. We had one more budget discussion scheduled last year that we didn't use, because we're very successful in getting through all of those on a Saturday. So, I actually took that one off. But understand, if we need more, there is some extra days there that we can schedule for it. Under the schedule, you'd be looking to start your deliberations again the first week in May. And obviously, by the 18th of May, we have to have a budget adopted. And this year, the regular council meeting doesn't line up like it has in previous years. So, to meet the Friday, May 18th deadline, unless you get a budget put together prior to the first meeting in May, we're probably going to have to have a special meeting for the adoption.
Okay.
And if there aren't any objections to these dates that we laid out, we'll start plugging in the department, so you can get a fully updated one that shows exactly what the schedule will be and what departments.
Okay. Looks like it's a go. Right?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I will have to do some follow-ups on Councilman Kinsler's request about the Dog Park. We'll get information out. I did talk with DPW on the post office, post-road intersection. And of course, you know, the issue is that we don't have the, at least I'm not aware of, the permanent asphalt plants being open yet. So, the best we can do is throw the temporary in, and that comes out, especially with the volume of traffic there. But DPW is looking at the possible grinding and overlay this year to try to keep that a little longer until we get to the actual Roads 2010 project there. So, there will be something done this year in a more permanent nature. But right now, until we get the plants opened up, we're throwing the temporary in, and it's just going to come up.
Yeah. Councilman Crowley?
Even though there's a stop sign there, is it just possible we could put some kind of caution signs up or something? Because, I mean, there's some good potholes.
Yeah.
Just so people are aware, you know?
Yeah. We'll look at putting maybe a rough road ahead or something like that.
Yeah, anything like that. Just something in the road where people can see it. Thank you.
And I'll talk to DPW about the Town Farm Post Office Road Bridge. And we'll contact the contractor still responsible for that to make repairs. Again, most likely, it's going to be a temporary patch until they open up. So, but we're very hopeful that spring will come early.
Okay. All set?
Done.
Any questions for Matt?
Oh, Donna Street.
Donna Street?
Sorry, yeah, I have to look into that. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Next item would be the Town Attorney's Report and Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other than the items we discussed in executive session, I don't have anything formal. As you know, I was away last meeting with my family on vacation. I wanted to thank Senior Assistant Town Attorney Maria Elston for covering in my absence. But other than those items that we discussed in executive session, I don't have anything formal today.
And Maria did a great job filling in.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kevin? Councilman Lee?
Matt, is the questions on the P&amp;Z policy for the gas stations, is that within legal's hands? Or is that something that Jose is working with you on?
I have to check...
Going back a few meetings?
Yeah, I have to check with Ray Warren, and unfortunately, he is unavailable at present time. So, I haven't gotten an answer back where they stand with that.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Next item would be Reports of Special Committees of the Council. Any reports of special committees of the council? Councilman Kinsler.
Yeah, I just wanted to report, we had our first Energy Task Force meeting here at Town Hall and sort of laid the groundwork for future events and things we're going to be doing. It was thought, we're going to see if we can target three town buildings and put together an energy savings blueprint for each of those. So, look forward to seeing more about that. I want to thank Dan for your spearheading that and helping out. And we're waiting to hear back a few things. Our next meeting is on the 16th, on the 16th. So, the council meeting after that, we'll have another update on that. Thank you.
I think it's 15th, Councilman. 15th. The 3rd. Thursday.
Okay. All set, Tom? Councilman Stokes?
I just wanted to give a report. We had our first meeting of the Pre-Referendum Steering Committee for the consolidation last Thursday. We're meeting each Thursday until the job is accomplished, and the council feels it's been accomplished. But we met at Enfield High School. We took a tour of the entire school, looked at especially D-Wing and some of the inadequacies there and needs there. Our pomegranates, who kind of headed up this meeting, passed out a lot of information that had already been put together. And this coming Thursday, there'll be electing or selecting officers for the committee and moving forward on that. Myself and Tina LeBlanc from the Board of Ed work as liaison. And I think we both could say that the members in which this council had selected to serve could not be a better team of talent and workability. When I was hearing people talk, Randy Daigle, one in particular, who had a tremendous understanding of what we're doing, along with Judy Aparicio Rose and the other ones there, it was very impressive. And our pomegranates, obviously, is the right person. So, I want to, I wasn't here for the last meeting when you appointed, but I think you got the right people in the room at the time, so.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. Any other reports of special committees of the council? Okay. Sensing none, we move to old business. Appointments, Town Council appointed. Do not believe there are any. Any appointments, Town Manager appointed, Council approved?
None tonight.
None tonight. And items C, D, E, and F remain on the table, correct? Which moves us to new business. There is no consent agenda. Appointments, Town Council appointed, Commission on Aging. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Anthony Messina to the Commission on Aging.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini to appoint Anthony Messina. So, motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Anthony Messina.
Councilman Kinsler?
Anthony Messina.
Councilman Lee?
Anthony Messina.
Councilman Mangini?
Anthony Messina.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Anthony Messina.
Councilman Stokes?
Anthony Messina.
Councilman Arnoni?
Anthony Messina.
Councilman Crowley?
Anthony Messina.
There's nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Okay, that completes new business. We move to items for discussion. There is no consent agenda. And all remaining items have been moved to miscellaneous. So, we move to miscellaneous. And the first item would be Clean Energy Committee. Deputy Mayor Nelson?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Doug Lombardi to the Clean Energy Committee.
Second.
Motion, go ahead.
Motion to close nominations.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Doug Lombardi.
Councilman Kinsler?
Doug Lombardi.
Councilman Lee?
Doug Lombardi.
Councilman Mangini?
Doug Lombardi.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Doug Lombardi.
Councilman Stokes?
Doug Lombardi.
Councilman Arnoni?
Doug Lombardi.
Councilman Bosco? Oh, where did that come from? I'm sorry. Councilman Crowley, did I call on you?
Doug Lombardi.
Thank you. That was the mix-up. Okay, there's nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions. Sorry.
That's okay. Item two?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Raymond Gush to the Clean Energy Committee.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler.
Motion to close nominations.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Ray Gush.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Ray Gush.
Councilman Mangini?
Ray Gush.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Raymond Gush.
Councilman Stokes?
Raymond Gush.
Councilman Arnoni?
Raymond Gush.
Councilman Crowley?
Raymond Gush.
There's nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
And item four?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Andrew Urbanoits to the ZBA.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Motion to close nominations.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Andrew Urbanoits.
Councilman Kinsler?
Andrew Urbanoits.
Councilman Lee?
Andrew Urbanoits.
Councilman Mangini?
Andrew Urbanoits.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Andrew Urbanoits.
Four. Councilman Stokes? Councilman Arnoni?
Andrew Urbanoits.
Councilman Crowley?
Not what Kenny said. Andrew Urbanoits.
There's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Did just come back.
That completes appointments, Town Council appointed. There are no appointments, Town Manager appointed, Council approved. So, we move to discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with North Central Area on Aging for Alzheimer's Aid Grant. Resolve that the Town Manager, Matthew W. Koppler, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the North Central Area on Aging for Alzheimer's Aid Grant, July 1st, 2012, to June 30th, 2013, and to affix the corporate seal.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion. Discussion. Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with Connecticut DOT for cities and towns for dial-a-ride services. Resolve that the Town Manager, Matthew W. Copley, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the Connecticut Department of Transportation for cities and towns for dial-a-ride for fiscal year 2012, fiscal year 2013, and to affix the corporate seal.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
There's nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with the North Central Area on Aging for Supportive Services Grant Renewal.
So moved.
Resolve that the Town Manager, Matthew W. Copley, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the North Central Area on Aging for Supportive Services, October 1st, 2012, to September 30th, 2013, and to affix the corporate seal.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion.
Yes, please.
Councilman Lee?
Through to Matt, the application that we're submitting is going to go back out at the $20,000 level. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Correct. I think that is the maximum we can apply for.
Okay. So even, it was shorted last year down to like, I think it says 56-ish.
Right. 5616, yep.
Okay, and we met, the town picked up the balance of that in the, out of their fund?
Well, our, yeah, our share in the Adult Day Center is all funded by the client fees.
Okay.
So this is one of those where there is no general fund contribution for the service.
All right, and I'm assuming social services has no indication yet where this grant is coming in at the present time?
Probably back around that 56. If you look back historically, that's about where we're at.
We always ask for the maximum, okay.
Correct.
All right, very well, thank you.
All set, Bill?
I'm good.
Anyone else? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with North Central Area on Age, North Central Area on Agency on Aging?
Yep.
North Central Area Agency on Aging, maybe there's an extra.
There's a dash missing.
Agency on Aging Respite for Adult Day Center Respite Care Grant.
So moved.
Not, didn't read the resolution yet.
Sorry.
With the iPads, it takes me a little longer to get there. Resolve that the Town Manager, Matthew W. Copley, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the North Central Area on Aging for Adult Day Center Respite Care Grant, October 1st, 2012, to September 30th, 2013, and to affix the corporate seal.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Kinsler, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion. Sensing none, roll call.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with the State DOT for capital assistance towards the cost of a Lyft minibus.
So moved?
Nope. The iPad takes a little longer to get to the page. Resolve that the Town Manager, Matthew W. Copley, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the State Department of Transportation for capital assistance of 80% towards the cost of a Lyft-equipped minibus and to affix the corporate seal.
So moved.
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion. Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, resolution regarding sending public hearing for the Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Enfield values the opinions and comments of its constituents, and whereas in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 4 of the Enfield Town Charter, any elector or taxpayer may have an opportunity to be heard regarding appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year and for the purpose of being heard on issues of vital community importance and concern. And whereas the Town Council shall conduct a public hearing at the Enfield High School Auditorium, 1264 Enfield Street, Wednesday, April 25th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. And resolve that the order of business of the 2012-2013 budget hearing be arranged as follows. One, presentation of the Town Manager's budget. Two, the Chairman of the Board of Education highlights education budget. Three, comments from members of the public for the first time. Be it further resolved that each speaker be requested to register with the Town Clerk his name and address, and that no speaker be allowed to speak more than five minutes each successive time the speaker's name is called. Additionally, any speaker who is not registered with the Town Clerk will be allowed to speak only after those who have registered no longer wish to speak.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Councilman Kinsler?
Did we set up a?
Microphone.
We set up a time limit for the meeting, or is this just a go-go-go?
It is a, traditionally, a go-go-go until those who no longer wish to speak are done.
So if people wishing to speak should pretty much stay for the entire meeting, not worry about a cutoff time?
Correct.
That's it.
Anyone else? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
That completes miscellaneous. Next item on the agenda is Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Sensing none, Councilman Communications, anyone on the council? Councilman Stokes?
I wanted to mention too, since the mayor and Cindy had mentioned about reading to the children, I was invited last Friday to go to the Enfield Child Development Center and for the three and four-year-olds, and I read the book, Green Eggs and Ham, and Sam I Am, so, and I want to thank them for the wonderful host they were, and the kids also made me a nice card, I have it at home, and, but I had a good time reading the books. I wanted to thank them for the invite, and I got a chance to see the Child Development Center in action, so I was pretty impressed, so, want to thank them for that.
Thank you, Greg. Any Councilman Communications? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
I'd hate to ask again, Matt, but if you could send somebody down to fill the potholes on Loughlin after this last rain.
Still below their weight.
I'd start, I think the whole road's starting to come apart again, that's why it keeps.
'Tis the season, right?
'Tis the season.
End of the winter?
Yep.
Councilman Lee?
Everyone up here this morning got a, an email from CCM. It's the weekly message from their legislative team, and if you haven't read it yet, take a good, close look at it. It outlines 19 bills in front of the legislature that are, in some cases, massive new fiscal mandates. Some of them authority intrusions, but others have the potential for being pretty serious impacts on budgets potentially this year. So I don't, I don't know if staff looks at them at all and has anything to add over the next coming weeks, but do we, Scott, do we plan on having the delegation in here at some point in the upcoming budget cycle?
Yes.
We're hopefully going to have everybody on the 19th. We've heard from Representative Talarida that she'll be available on the 19th.
Good.
I spoke with Representative Kiner this afternoon, he'll, he thinks he's going to be available in case, of course, caveat is, if there's any special meetings or hearings that are called, they may not be available. And I know we reached out to Senator Kissel's office, I'm just not aware of what was communicated back with that.
Okay, great, thank you.
If I could, just one thing.
Sure.
I don't know if it was in today's, I just can't remember which one I read, but, you know, one of the issues that we've had, as councils were, is with our game.
Evan, there's been a lot of changes this offseason for your town.
Our fishing game program.
He found you too.
Our fishing game program, as councils are aware, is kind of backed off a little bit because of their inability to carry sidearms. And a bill was put forward this year that would allow them to carry firearms after training through the police department. Council may be aware, the stick, the thing that caused the issue is that they would be required to go through the police academy, which would be a 26-week expensive type of thing to go through for these individuals. Unfortunately, CCM is looking at that as an unfunded mandate, so when you read through that, they, they're approaching that from the standpoint of saying, this is not a good thing. In fact, from our standpoint, we're one of the few communities that has a fishing game program. It's not an unfunded mandate. Actually, what they require right now is the unfunded mandate.
Right.
And this is the workaround for that, so I don't know if it's something that we should, you know, reach out to CCM to present the other side, or how you want to go about this.
Yeah, that, I did flag that one as the one that looked good. The, in that matter, do, are wardens still have lost their arrest authority, is that correct?
Actually, they never really had, I believe, arrest authority.
Okay.
Right, and that's, that's, again, one of the other issues with that, but, yeah.
Okay, Councilman Mangini?
I'd like to further address the CCM issue. Bill, just to let you know, we do have a board meeting on Thursday.